Be advised that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the Sunshine Mall and the following package. Notice advertising of the Valentine Times and Camden Courier-Post on December 22, 2017. You can sit on the bulletin board on this day. Mr. Varell.
Here.
Mrs. Palodi. Mr. Schwartz. Mr. O'Connell.
Here.
Mr. Ketchum.
Here. Fortunately, we have a court. This would have been a short meeting. So, let's do some business first, and that is, I need a motion to approve the minutes of November 28th work session and closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. And I need a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th in the public, from the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. And I also need a motion granting the mercantile license for Main Line Auto 207-27 Carriage Lane.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. We have a couple of resolutions that we need to bring up, and the first one is Resolution 2018-19. This is establishing salaries for various employees of the township of Delran in this county and this state.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
There we go. Let the record show that Councilman Schwartz is here.
Please see the call in us.
That's okay. We got started without you. You went for three minutes or five minutes, depending on which of my watches I looked at.
I appreciate that. Sorry, I was starting to watch.
No worries. So, we are, we're past the, is it? Yep.
Now that I'm here, turn it off.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't know what happened. It was a lot, but it must have happened.
But we have backup from, from Stolford.
Thank you.
So, we are at the second resolution. This is Resolution 2018-20.
Sure.
Was that? Oh, I did. I need to state it again.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry.
I did, but I'll say it again because it's worth repeating. Let the record chair, the Councilman Schwartz is here, and we're at Resolution 2018-20.
I'll second the motion.
Well, you didn't even have the motion yet.
You didn't even did.
Dan, Dan.
You did. I need to read the motion.
You guys definitely have your subject in this moment.
Can I do that, Mike?
You can walk him to read the comments.
All right, so, Resolution 2018-20, don't say anything, is a resolution to the township accepting a certified list for the township of Delran, participating volunteer emergency squads for eligibility in length of service awards program, LoSAP, for the year 2017.
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Now, we got the order.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. Next is Resolution 2018-21, authorizing executive session to discuss the following issue, the personnel issue regarding the Sewer Department.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Varell.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell.
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum.
Aye. So, easing right into this, we're going to talk about the road program and the debt service report that Jeff has prepared. And before, I think before we start talking about specific roads, let's talk about the debt service and where we need to be so we know what our potential budget is before we start talking about what routes we'd like to do. Jeff, why don't you go first?
One of the things I supplied you with is a sheet that was included in the 2016 audit, which has the payoff of a couple of the general obligation bonds, and specifically, general obligation bond that was issued on August 15, 2009. The payment in 2018 is $996, so just short of a million dollars. That's the last payment on that bond that comes off the books after 2018, after we make that payment. Then there was a, if you go to the bottom of the page, and I'm ignoring the open space, the open space payments come from the open space fund. So, if I'm going to the bottom of the page, the general obligation refunding bond in 2018 has a payment of $290,000, and you can see in 2019 has two different payment, or two different amounts, but it's a total of $320,000. So you have approximately a million coming off in 18, after 18, and you have another $320,000 coming off after 2019. At the same time, you have about $10 million in notes that will either have to be paid off with a plan of paying the notes down over time and/or going to a general obligation bond. So, that was, for the last couple of years, we've been talking about trying to dovetail whatever we're doing with long-term debt with the, with the pay, paying, paying off of this existing debt. So, essentially, you have that coming up and that opportunity before you in 19. If you were to do something, if you were determined to take your temporary notes this year and go into a permanent bond, your first payment wouldn't be till 19 anyway, and what I indicated in our memorandum was in the next couple of months, we're going to put something before you in terms of a couple of plans or options for you to look at in terms of that debt service, but that's essentially where you stand.
So, you don't have, you don't have a specific recommendation yet? You're, you've reached, I'm assuming you've reached out to the CFO or whatever.
Right, we're, we're looking at two different things, and one is to go to a permanent bonding, and the other one is to basically pay off the existing notes over a period of time. And we're looking at the two of those, and in the next couple of months, we'll have, we'll have more of an option or a couple of options in the plan. One of the things we have to look at is there's a certain amount of money that you have to pay off when you have notes each year in terms of bringing them down and/or go to permanent bonding. So, we're putting all of those pieces together for you. So, no, I don't have a specific recommendation tonight on that.
So, from a strictly budgetary purpose for a capital budget, because in the roads and everything else that we're going to be talking about in capital, I, we have a recommendation, it seems like either we've discussed or you've put somewhere of about a million dollars total.
Yeah, for capital, yeah.
For capital.
I mean, if you were to continue, you know, we had not been doing numbers that large up until the last couple of years, so you're starting to accumulate debt. At the same time, you're in a really good position with respect to your surplus, and so you had some ability to do some things there. But I'm saying with, if you keep your total capital budget, and that means equipment and roads, and a million and under, you're good for the next five to six years. After that, then you're going to have to address that with another, either bond again or paying down notes because you'll have accumulated five or six million on top of that 10 million that you have. The 10 million, regardless of what we do, that 10 million in notes you have now is basically a wash with what you, you're going to be paying off. No matter how we do it, we're, we're going to probably suggest is that you keep paying at that level, that million, and then you get another $320,000 after 2019 or in 2012. So, you have about a million dollars a year.
I got a preliminary question, although you're not telling all the numbers. If we were, this year's capital budget is that, if we just said bonds are the direction we go, is this budget toward to be bonded as part of that group, or is this, you know, possibly going to stay as a, you know, as a temporary financing situation until the next sale?
More than likely, it would, it would be until the next sale because we probably wouldn't have the expenditures done. So, it would probably go towards the next group, yes.
So, we'd be up till this year?
Yes, correct.
And that, what's the timeframe, like, of what we have in temporarys, four years, five years, three years? Roughly, you had mentioned it before.
Probably about five years.
Okay. So, we're looking at, you know, whatever.
Five to six years, yeah.
And this is like thought process, that's why I'm asking these questions. If we, if that was the direction that we go with selling those permanent bonds, then really, we're looking at another five or six years before the next.
Correct.
Round of selling.
Correct.
And it was, and you gave me numbers, sort of like, it's that, that 900-some thousand basically washes this year, whatever there's in bond, notes for next year.
Correct.
And payment.
Right, if you do a run-through, and I'm, the numbers are conservative, but there's all kinds of variables because the bond council, whoever does the bond issues got to take a little bit of ordinances, take a look at what the useful life, the life on the individual items are, and then gets an average. So, you know, that would be done by a bond council, but for instance, I just use five years, 5%. And the cost, there would be a cost doing the bonds. If you take a look at that, it comes out to a little bit over a million dollars, and we're having a 996 in the book, so it's basically a wash on the, yeah, that 10 million.
But we wouldn't really see those permanent payments for anything, you know, for this many few, several years. If we were to, if it was due, the council, that promise would continue in that direction, where it'd be, you just theory, you'd have very financing, not fill a certain hour amount.
You mean the second round?
Yeah, once they're, they're sold off, then it's kind of like we're, we're building a backup to it around that. Because if I remember correctly, we always did that way because of the costs incurred with.
Right.
It's like, you don't want to sell of bonds for $100,000.
Two or three million.
It's too expensive.
Right.
It doesn't make sense, so.
So, you're, just as I understand, Mike, your question is, once we do, if we were to decide to go to permanent bonding with the 10 million that's, that we currently have, and then it would be another five years or so before we're at the point where we had to make another decision about whether to go to permanent bonding? Is that just being?
In the, yeah, that was, that was kind of the thought process, and the reasoning was is that, you know, they're kind of segueing to the road program, is that it seemed that the estimates were probably the best I've ever seen for road estimates. And, you know, I had some questions about that, and obviously, when prices are good, you want to maximize, you know, you want to buy when the prices are down. You know, and that's why I was kind of wondering if the long-term implications might be. And I don't even know really, Major Jersher?
Yeah.
Like, am I, am I correct when I saw those numbers, that they're really down right now?
Yeah, it's not necessarily a function of the prices for, you know, materials and insulation. It's more of a function of the methodology that's going to be going into some of these roads. You know, pretty much everything we've done for the last five, six, seven years, we're mostly all reconstrux. We got lucky for a couple of mill in overlays, and it's basically a difference is like, you know, mill overlay is basically just a resurface, you're taking over the top two inches and putting it back. Previously, we had to do full reconstruct because simply the existing pavement, the asphalt thickness just wasn't there. You want at least, you know, the standard's been about five inches of asphalt. And all the, most, majority of the roads we've done to date, you're dealing with old road designs where it's only two, three inches of asphalt. One of the things we were waiting for was the coring, which we got back over the last month. It showed that a lot of these roads that we're targeting as, you know, one of the worst roads in town have a good asphalt thickness out there, and therefore, it's, you know, a lot cheaper just to resurface it, you know, bring it to where it needs to be. So, that's why you're seeing lower prices, it's just because.
It's not reflective of the market.
It's not necessarily, I mean, oil, I mean, it is cheap price, oil down, and now it's going back up. So, we have been seeing over the last six months, cheap asphalt prices. Yeah, and there's, I can't, I don't know how much, how it's going to happen in the future, but no, it's mostly based on the, what we have to do to actually fix the road.
That's the majority of the difference.
Yeah.
In the asphalt.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at, like, Lipton Thall, that's still a high, relatively high number, but you have to lick them all down, and that's a two and a half inch of asphalt out there, we got to reconstruct the road.
So, and we're all, we all feel comfortable about the financing itself and what the plan is? If the plan is, let's wait to get some more information.
If the plan is, we're going to get two proposals, I think, right, Jeff?
In terms of debt service, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, with that being said, and the overall capital budget right now guesstimated at, at a million dollars, we probably want to stay around $800,000, I would think, for roads. Would that be fair?
Yeah, I mean, what, what, I'm not saying you can't spend 2 million or whatever, whatever you want to spend. What I'm saying is that at a million.
Yeah.
You're on course, it's not going to have any kind of impact, at least for the next four or five years, on taxes.
Right.
You know, if you start doing 2 million, then you can expect that you're going to have an impact on taxes. That's not, you know, if, what you want.
That's where I was trying to get.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do that, and you recognize that, okay, I'm willing to accept that we're going to have an increase in taxes because we want to do this many roads, then that's what you do. It's just kind of setting the parameters of where you're at.
Kind of where I was going, it's kind of like with cost averaging, you know. We tell you if it's a million a year, it was your recommendation, doesn't mean it has to be a million a year. It could be 600,000 one year, and 1.4 million the other. And that's why I was asking about the prices and the asphalt, is it to our advantage? And maybe, you know, stretch now when we can do more, and then, you know, maybe dial back later when we don't want to do as much because it's expensive. But we thought it was just for us.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that the, I don't know whether it's the mark, you know, it's, I was interested to see why the numbers were lower myself, but it sounds like it's not necessarily reflective of the oil market, but more just because we're not doing what we're doing. So, I think for now, and because it always ends up a horse trading effort at this table when we come to roads, that maybe we, we use that as just kind of a general thought at eight, and then if we get to the point where, well, you know, maybe it's going to be nine, or maybe it's going to be 12, 1.2. We do that. We are missing Patty, and I know she has, she has expressed, you know, her opinion on some of this, and I think we should consider that as well. But for right now, help me to just understand the Hartford Road deal, is part of that is a grant?
Yeah, okay, right now, for Hartford Road, we're estimating about 600,000 to completely resurface the road from Burge Road to Moorestown.
Right.
You currently have in place a grant for 193,000 for FY 2017, miserably. We have a pending application for FY 2018, which we anticipate coming in the next two, three months. We, we're, as we're, assuming it's going to be about 200,000, that's how they usually, we are. There's talk that it might be more because of the gas tax, and which we were expecting last time, it had been kicking. It could be less, or it could be nothing, so I don't know.
Right.
So, but assuming you get 200,000, that leaves about 200,000 left that needs to be funded.
So, that, that would be? Two oh seven thousand?
Would the grant money, would that go into that 200,000?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, so, for Hartford Road, you would need basically 200,000.
About 200,000.
What's the total on that list?
The big list?
The top, the top 10 roads, which includes Hartford plus the nine residential streets, total with engineering was 2.3 million.
Okay, isn't that, are these listed in a certain order, or just?
I just listed them alphabetically, except for Hartford Road, which is just a little bit different animal.
Is the 207 of Hartford Road in that 2.2?
Yeah, the 2.3 includes the 200,000 for Hartford Road.
So, there are, and these, this top tier that you're, that you're showing here, the top, the top nine or the top 10, where it's most traveled.
I would recommend you at least fund, you compared to fund Hartford Road, because that's most probably the busiest, most important road you have far as, you know, economy and traffic.
So, beyond that, there seems to be a number of, of streets, and I know, just looking at it, I know Patty's feeling about Brown Street was, why don't we finish the ones that we started? And, but I don't know about the condition of that particular section from Front to Third. Is there?
We don't have Brown in the top.
I know, I know that, but I'm just, I'm just bringing it up, because, you know, Patty brought it up earlier, she's not here today. So, I'm just, I'm just thinking, just thinking about that section, Front to Third is obviously where Simon and Schuster is. That particular stretch of road, really bad, not so bad, get it waited another year.
I mean, it's showing wear and tear, I believe, but I just.
I mean, on its face, it's hot, yeah.
I think there's some obstacle with that, too, because like, it's matched up. You have a 60-year-old, 65-year-old road matched up to a brand-new piece of asphalt.
Right.
And I would say driving down the road, not me personally driving, car going down the road, there's a substantial difference. It's hard to say, because this is like, this is a brand-new reconstructed road that depends. Now, you know, the one thing about that, though, is I would say, you know, with Simon and Schuster, I mean, there's a lot of heavy vehicle traffic, so, you know, you also run the risk of it just deteriorating.
Are they, are they helping with this? Are they using Brown Street still for?
It should have been substantially, I mean, they do.
Yeah, it's been reduced.
Supposedly a substantial reduction. I haven't, I don't, I don't have the traffic counter.
I know they have.
But they're, everybody's supposed to be trimming off of Front and Chester. That's why they did all the improvement, that the Chester front is actually the light, they widened the whole corner.
So, I know that the, unfortunately, they're the highest two. I'm just bringing these up because they are, they are names that we've talked about for a long time, and they're four and five, where Lipton Thall and, and Lidle.
Lipton Thall's been on a top, you know, list for a long time.
They've been a long time. And Lidle is.
That Lidle number is for the entire road, it's 222,000 for the entire road.
Yeah.
But only half that is in Delran.
Right. Now, can we do just our part?
Sure, you're only responsible for your part, I'm assuming.
Will we reach out to Riverside? I mean, Riverside's entire budget last year was about $197,000 for roads. So, I don't know that they want to just join us.
Can I say something? Greenwood Avenue, which Mike brought up to me a couple of times, I didn't look at that again because I was a little unsure of my answer. I remember before I said it wasn't too bad, but I looked at it again. I think I got a decent overall. It is up there in the list. We have it listed in the future considerations, though. But the reason why I bring that up is because that's a half Riverside, half Delran town. And they, I think Riverside must have redone their portion of Greenwood Avenue within the last five, 10 years, and they stopped right at the border, and, you know, majority of the roads in Riverside.
I think it's supposed to be a year to do that.
Yeah, you can see there's definitely newer pavement on that portion, but the rest of it has to get done, but it's just an example of, did they afford you when they did, or?
No, did they? I don't remember them saying, hey, guys, want to work on this.
That was just a big scene, diagonal across the road.
Yeah.
That's how we done that.
Would it pay to ask them? Does it cost us?
Well, it'd hurt to ask them. I mean, I think that Lidle would be, we would pave our part as, so our part, everybody not on our part is not a Delran resident, would that be accurate to say?
It says 50% Riverside is what it says.
Right.
It's tough, I mean, when we do the survey, we'll figure it out, but the way the tax map shows in this border, it's basically Smith Street approximately, and the municipal border's diagonal, so there could be properties on Lidle that are in Delran, but front on Lidle, then Lidle's in. Kind of like, almost like a Chester Ave condition?
There, there, to the best of my knowledge, now there aren't any that front, from that account. I know where the, I lived growing up.
Yeah.
And where that line is, it kind of cuts across the street where there really isn't any houses on the one side. That's, and then it cuts off the corner at Lipton Thall.
Right, yeah, Lipton Thall itself is on the entire line.
Yeah, but to my knowledge, there are no houses from Delran that point to the area that would be inside of the river.
Okay, and if anything, would they be like, closest to Smith, if anyone actually has part of it?
Jim, so the price then on Lidle, is that the price for just us, or is that the price for?
No, that's, you can cut that out, I'd say 110, then.
Okay.
Now, would that be?
That doesn't include engineering.
Would it be fair to cut it in half, only because, like, our part is probably three quarters of the road?
I mean.
Not really a half.
I thought.
There's just something I have to be number kind of.
I think a lot more of it's in Riverside than, than you think. I didn't get a bigger tax map, but, I mean, I knew a lot of those people on those streets are most of them from Riverside.
Because the cuts at Smith, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, like, the intersection, it's hard to tell, the intersection of Smith and Lidle might actually be in Riverside.
It is.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I'm comf, I mean, it's, it's such a short road, I'm comfortable with just like half our number.
Okay, well, just to make sure that you're comfortable with that.
We, yeah, these are budget numbers we give you, so there's contingency we throw in, and then even in some of the pricing, you know, we try to, we continue, we put contingency on the quantity and then put a contingency on that. This way, in the end, you know, the actual contract award is less than the budget amount, and then hopefully, the actual final contract amount is less than what you award. For example, this road program we're finishing now, which, you know, the Main Street and Drexel, it was awarded well under the budget amount, and now we're going to, you'll find out in the next month somebody closing it out, it's closing out, you know, a good amount under the actual award.
Down one, or were they both reconstruxed?
For this round, everything was reconstructed except Greenbrier.
Now, the question, and this is kind of an engineered question. One of the reasons I think that, like, the phone Lidle just got to get pushed back, like, these, these are like no-travel streets. I mean, there's nowhere to go, they're not cut through to a neighborhood, or, they're definitely not a street because somebody has absolute reason to be on the streets who are really not. Is there like, I don't know, I guess, is there like a light-use contingent, like with reconstruction? Like, are there different standards?
I mean, unless, unless there's an extreme, I don't think either of these roads would be that extreme to the point where we would reduce the paving thickness. Like, like your driveway, you can get away with a two-inch pavement surface on some, some stone underneath where your residential driveway, but for a municipal street, you know, it comes down to, in the future, you know, being able just to resurface it in the future, unless you have an adequate base course, you know, you're really stuck with reconstructing the road, you know, every time, so that's where we try to apply. So, I guess to answer your question, I don't, I don't think those roads would qualify for anything where we would have to go to a street where we treat it any less than, you know, the full, full five inches.
There's like a lesser standard if it was light use to that.
No, we, yeah, I mean, yeah, exactly. I mean, there's, there's no, there's no difference I would see between Lipton Thall and like Oxford or, you know, White Marsh we just did. I mean, those are two just cut-through streets, are really loud than we did a few years ago. But, yeah, you still got, Jerry, or if I'm, I mean, it is light volume, but they still have the same heavy vehicles.
Plows go through.
Plows.
So, so.
But I understand what you're saying, hey, we, we would try to consider that, but.
Jeff has either decided to sail the Seven Seas, or he's brought the tax map out with us. Because, wow, that's a big map. So.
I would say for 100,000.
When you said Lidle, how far did you measure the whole street?
Yeah, the whole road.
And how far does Lidle go beyond this?
This door and four meters there.
Okay.
So, it's about? One-third of what, in, in, in Delran outside of Rose?
It almost looks like half. It's around half. This is Lipton Thall, right?
Yeah.
So, Legend is blocking it, so right about there. You know, I'd say it's about half, because you got front edge, you got front edge facing both sides. So, even in half, that's a good measure. And that's for reconstruct, I guess, because it's such a short road?
Uh, no, because it's a, it's a bad, very bad condition in the.
No, no, I'm saying, it's a reconstruct, but it's a low number.
Because it's a, you know, a smaller, smaller truck.
And, and obviously, those two. And, and obviously those two, it would make sense to try, if we were gonna do them, to do them together.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
Especially Riverside twenty-two.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it makes a lot of sense, it's a straight, you know, kind of a straight run.
If they have a good protractor, they can probably cut that angle pretty good. Dan, Dan, you, you were, this is your ward, you've been there, those roads are pretty, pretty horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know when the last time I even did it.
Would they?
Is anybody here on council remember?
Jeff's, Jeff's.
Not since, yeah, nineteen seventy.
Nineteen seventy, that's good.
They paved them in seventy?
Two years.
No, no, they wasn't paid, it hasn't been paid since, that's why they live there. And it's the same road that was there then, so that's what, forty-eight years.
Jeff, have they been, do you know, have they ever been done?
All the other streets have been done, right?
The other streets have been done.
Well, yeah, we've done, you know, between us and.
Florence, Moses, and Smith.
Right, so it's at least twenty-three years, and what's, and I definitely should have printed it on the big paper.
They have trees on them.
The.
There's like, there's like roots coming through.
Everything's been done down there except for the dead end of Wills and those two.
Right, and it's, there's a couple of dead ends, I think.
That would end speedboats.
It was, yeah, that's.
Hubs, hubs wasn't done.
Hubs and.
Hubs and Wills.
Florence was done, the other side of Wills was done, Smith was done.
Smith was done, okay.
Yeah, we did done. Florence, Smith, and Quarter were done at one time.
And one side of Wills.
Yeah, that was done, like, that's what I was having those order and.
Well, okay, so, let, let's try to see how we put them in the, for lack of a better way to do this. Put them in the A category along with Hartford in the A category that we need to do, so far, we're doing pretty good. Jim, help us with the, you know, obviously, we need to either pare this in half or, come up with a reason why certain streets should be done together. So we have.
Was that a two year number though, again, Gary?
Right, well, that's what it says, eighteen, nineteen.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, I figure, I don't, you know, that obviously could be three years, depending how much money you wanna put to it.
It's an interesting question, if we're at two, you have two million over two years, if two point three does that entire list.
Right, but, but then will next year's council be tempted to say, well, you know, even though we did the eighteen, nineteen together, like this year, we did sixteen, seventeen. But that was because sixteen didn't get done, and, you know, because we were behind, and now we're.
Are we allowed to do it in the opposite version?
I mean. No, no, I don't think so, no, we could, we could do it and just not do a road program next year. I mean, that would be the, that would be the opposite program, but I don't know whether that's a good idea. I, I hear you, I hear you pushing to get that, that, get us to do the whole list, Tyler, what did you have?
I mean, just to kind of group things, two Diane and seven, you'd probably do together, I mean, the touch rate.
Diane and Patricia, you'd wanna do it at the same time.
Yeah. I mean, you wouldn't wanna separate that.
With, yeah, Winmore and Antietam, you wanna do it at the same time.
Together, yeah, so there's two groups if you were, you know, B and C, I guess you could call that.
And then, um, didn't we say that River, we were waiting to see what the, what the county was gonna do with their bike?
Yeah.
And the trails thing.
It's the things, like River and Norman are worst right out that corner of Norman and River, I mean, Norman, Norman's pretty bad all the way up, but River's the worst in front of the plant. And that's where most of the work is being done by the county. And that's where the road is in the least, obviously, it kind of, that's where it's the thinnest still, the other side of River up by Stewart is, is, that road would be like a half, you know, free surface, half reconstructed. But we'd have to reconstruct in front of the plant.
But we, I thought we said that we were gonna wait and see what the county did first.
Yeah. We thought, we, what, what we said last time is if, if you wanted to do Norman first, and since we're gonna have equipment there, we'll do some resurfacing on River, just to give us more time with the road, so we're gonna be there.
Now, I have, I have a question, actually, it's Jeff, but, when you have something like that, where it's direct access to the utility. Is it reasonable to have like, you know, the utility budget paid for that? And, and what, I guess, I guess that question from the previous, we have like, you know, access to pump stations, in this case, the actual place. Which does kind of take some of the pressure off the municipal budget. Does that allow them?
That one, I'd have to a little more research on, since we're looking at the entire river.
No, but I would say even if they just paid for the, the access, you know.
Did you say that, that River and, what did you say, River and Norman was, was, isn't that the intersection right there, that's right there at the sewer plant? Could we do a, you know, maybe Jeff, if you look into that, if we took some heat off of this road program and did that as a, as a cooperative, I don't know if I'm, you know, making stuff up based on what Mike said.
That's what I was gonna do.
To do, to do, similar to the way we did the intersections, do a chunk of the road and a chunk of the road, just because, I gotta believe the traffic there is, with the, with the sewer vehicles, has to be higher than in, in the neighborhood.
But is that the area you're saying that the county would be most likely at?
No.
Just pay money until it's gonna come a year.
Yeah.
Mr. President, just to focus on, you had said before that keeping that back of everyone's mind, that eight hundred number?
Yeah.
Based on what everyone's discussed at this point, Hartford Road and prioritizing Lichtenthall and Lidl, mathematically, that really puts, Diane and Patricia would put you at about nine hundred, maybe a little bit more?
Yeah. Yeah, so Lidl, Lichtenthall, and Hartford is about six hundred, six fifty, plus engineering, you're like, like seven fifty.
So these numbers aren't with engineering?
No.
I died, I, I, he did it at the end.
This is different from this.
Yeah, that's, that's an old one.
I should, I should have, I should have put each individual with engineering, but it's hard, yeah.
Jeff, just a question, to reconstruct, obviously, the engineering required for that is more than the mill and the overlay?
Yes, but it works out as far, because we use the engineering, we budget based on percentage, so it works out. That makes sense.
So, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, there is more design involved, but.
Right.
Gary, I mean, I guess the decision, if you're taking those two out, either the plant, I mean, you're, you're the A or whatever you wanna call them, the Antietam section or the Diane section, right? Or you split it up, and that puts you over. If you assume Hartford and the other two, looking for a Lidl.
If, if.
And I would say too, we say, uh, do Antietam, if you're gonna do Winmore, do Winmore, and do Antietam, we don't necessarily have to do that, because we still have to do Pine Valley over there. And then, you know, there's those two courts over there, and Patricia and Diane aren't that far either, I mean.
So, these aren't in?
These are in output order.
Right, is there a, is, are they equally in bad shape, would you say, or are there any?
I would say Winmore's probably worse than Antietam, Jerry Trumbull, correct me if I'm mistaken.
I think Norman's a little bit.
Norman's pretty bad.
Norman. But we, but, so if we did.
What are you talking about, what's the frontage you plan on a feet?
That's on River, but, yeah, probably two, three hundred feet. Well, it goes, it goes basically up to Alden.
Potentially, this walkway thing, everything, maybe it's, you wish. And the, the one thing, it's like, you know, this is where I'm kind of way in, it's like, you have Lichtenthall, Lidl, I know the bad, but there, nobody drives. You have Norman and River, where we have sewer utility, you have Marina, you have Angel Island, and then you have, you know, Front Brown, which surrounds like our, you know, the biggest single quarter. You know, how do you prioritize, you know, how, you know, which ones are important. And to me, I think that, you know, traffic count is important, and that's one of the things. I mean, you know, dead end streets are fundamentally, you know, versus, you know, access to, you know, the kind of park, sewer, sewer, the Marina, the boat repair, business, all that stuff along there. And, and then Simon and Schuster, which is not only truck traffic, but, you know, is hundreds of cars a day just in employee traffic. It's from.
So, um, and, you know, and that's a valid point, there's, there's traffic and the impact on, on, on the people that drive that, most of them, I would guess, are a road. Uh, Delray residents, either way, my, my concern with all of this is that we know how quickly roads deteriorate. And while I know that we were talking about clustering before ad nauseum, and I believe that it would probably be an efficient way to do this. I don't know that it, in, it practically works, Jerry was kind enough to point out at the last meeting that, you know, that these roads go bad and clustering might not work, and, or we may not be ready for it, I don't know at what point, this is like painting a bridge. You know, once you get, once you get all these roads paved, there's gonna be another list, there's never gonna, it's never gonna be done. So, so do we look at what are the, you know, obviously Hartford is, is a worst case, Norman's a worst case, Winmore's worse. Lichtenthall and Lidl, I, I'm, I'm just saying, we've seen them, we've seen them forever, and those two, I think, need to be done together since they intersect. Uh, where, where do they intersect? Should we be doing the? The streets or some? The middle of the project is Riverside.
Just like the last, actually, the last two, at least the last one, one of them is Riverside. So it doesn't actually go, the, the one end is in Riverside. I don't know, you can stop it right there, but, um, looking for the one house is in Riverside.
So the, the front street here, this is Leon to Brown, right, this is not in front of Simon and Schuster, it doesn't impact. That's on the other side of, of Brown, right? So while there's traffic, I'm sure, it's not the direct access road, other than if you come in off Main Street.
Well, yeah, Main to Brown, we do the traffic there.
All right.
Maybe approaching the friends, like, so is, are you, are you set on how much money you wanna spend for the next, I mean, is it gonna be eight hundred for the next two, three years?
As I would, my kids would say, oh, no.
Because you probably, if you take, I mean, cause if you add Brown into the list, and that's about two point four now, and, and divide it by three, that's eight hundred thousand per year. So if that's what you wanna do, then we'll just divide these roads over the next three years. I think if you do one road now, this year, next year, and the following year, it really doesn't matter, it's all gonna get done in the next three years. I don't think any one of these roads can't last more than the other over the next three years, so, whatever doesn't get done this year, Jerry's just gonna have to keep on it, just like he is, you know.
Which one of those are just, you said there was one that was a mill or whatever, like in the top list?
Uh, no, they're mostly all mill and over, except for Lidl, Lichtenthall, or any ones that are reconstructed.
Okay, they're, okay, so I understood it that way.
Yeah, so, and even Brown is, is the same way.
Well, there's an argument to be made that if they're just, if they're overlays right now, they become reconstructed if they.
I don't, I don't know that, I, I don't know, based on what Jim's saying, I don't know that, that, I, that's what I believed until I heard him say it has to do with the, the, what's underneath. So, you know, like, uh, Lichtenthall and Lidl, they just, they just started off, they're, they're not constructed the way roads are constructed anymore, they must be that old. It's not that they're, that they busted down to the foundation, for lack of a better term. Is it, Jim, help me, stop me if I'm, if I'm off base, so what I'm saying is, if something like Brown from third to front, if that were to get worse. Would that have to get, you know, significantly worse to become a reconstruct, or could that still be a mill and overlay?
Over the next three years, I don't see it changing from overlay to reconstruct, any of those roads, right? I mean, I mean, if anything, it might have to be a little bit more base repair.
Right.
But that's not really something that's noticeably changed the overall cost, where you, where you start moving these things.
So help, help us to understand that, that the determining factor of reconstruct, if it's.
Unless it's, I mean, Forge, Forge was, we, we originally planned on reconstructing just how bad it looked, but then we got cores, and we only had to resurface it. So it's, a lot of the issues you see are superficial, we really don't know unless we take off the service cores, but we know we're dealing with six or seven inches of asphalt. We're just gonna re-surface, and, and it, it has held up through the testing. If we, once we, if, if the nuclear option happens where we, we mill off the surface cores, now, all the, all these budgets include base repair. Like, so you usually assume when, when, you know, if there's adequate asphalt thickness there, you take off the top two inches and you put, you include in the budget a certain percentage of the area of the road that you can actually have to do a full reconstruct of, but, and that, and that happens.
Right, and that's base repair, just, I'm just making sure.
But I think Gary's question was, it has to do with the original construction of the road, it has to do with the duration of the road.
I think as, more, what we plan to do has more to do with the, what's out there now as far as the original construction of the road.
So neglecting a mill and overlay for another three years doesn't equate to, necessarily equate to?
I mean, it's hard to say, but I, I, I don't think so.
Yeah, okay.
It just seemed that we had all this, we did so, we had to do so many reconstructions because the roads just got so old that.
It will, it's probably a function of, you had to do some reconstructions, because those roads were in such bad condition, because there was such a little asphalt there, that they failed faster. You know, and they were, and they were, and because, and they were probably oldest roads to begin with, just because that's, they really have much asphalt there. And it also goes, there's so many factors that affect, it's, you know, there's so many factors that impact, like the deterioration of road. Volume, subgrade conditions, and how the original construction was done.
Jim, the one comment you had just made was that if you had Brown Street to the top list, you're at two point four, if you're staying at eight hundred thousand, you just split it over three years. That's the question is, how much do you wanna spend? That, there's an answer for you if you wanna.
Well, Brown is not on the top list.
Correct.
It just happens to be a road that when we're doing the half road, and so we did, we did three cores on it, there's still, I don't know.
And, and I bring up Brown earlier specifically because, you know, Patty had indicated in the prior meetings that, you know, let's finish the ones we started. And you're indicating that, you know, there's traffic around Simon and Schuster.
Yeah, and I, I agree with what she said, you know, I remember her saying that, and I agree with that, I mean, that was kind of the idea, but that's, that's the nature of roads. Because next year, we could, it could be really different list.
Right, and, and that, that was excellent segue, so my only other concern is if we say, oh, all right, two point four, we'll do eight hundred thousand a year for three years. Then what happens if we get what happened at Forge or Parry, where in one year, a road blew up? And we have to, now we have to, my concern is we say, okay, we're gonna do these roads, these roads, these roads, and then next year, there's two roads that blow up. And then everybody gets pushed back and, you know, sometimes, I just wanna make sure that we're not, we're not setting expectations where they shouldn't be.
Well, we are based, hopefully, on the fact that those roads, you know, other roads won't blow up.
Right.
It'll take an answer.
We wanna leave a contingency in there?
Well, I mean, or you just, not necessarily include Brown now, but just say, let's do Hartford and the other nine, you know, plan to do that for the next three years. We'd get, you know, a good amount in the first year, a good amount the second year, and the third year, we have two targeted definitely, and then we'll have a couple of place holders there. So the, the original, the total right now is like just under two point three.
Yeah.
You would sell these, all, right off about a hundred thousand left for contingency for another road.
I guarantee.
It's hard to say, every year we do road program, our number's always coming in less than the original budget and less than, you know, the contract amount, so there's always leftover money that you could, I don't, that could be re-appropriated. Help with this, this road, we could get more grant money.
Do we wanna say, I'm just thinking out loud, do we wanna say nine hundred? Because you, you do a good job of overestimating, which, which we like, I'd rather you, I would rather you overestimate than underestimate. If we set nine with a, with a couple of deletion items, or?
For this year, if you only wanna spend eight.
Yeah.
Then take out a million dollars of roads, and then out of that, we'll do a deletion item based on bids coming in to get you under eight.
Right.
But this way, we're, we, you know. But this way, we're, we, you know.
Because I know it, you got to, you got to play that.
After we design it and we know exactly how much concrete work's going to be done, we'll have a contingency. And then you'll have it designed and ready for the next year.
In your Lydall estimate of 222,000, did you consider the whole road?
That's the whole road, so cut that in half. So say a hundred.
And does that impact the bottom line here?
Yes.
But, so is, and the 207 was included, but, so we can take a hundred and eleven thousand dollars off of that?
Take 120 off the total number, because that includes some engineering.
All right, so.
So now you're at 2.15.
Six, 15, 16. Just for round numbers, say 160. So 2.16, 2.2.16.
You know, Gary, I appreciate what you said about Jim's, how he gives a surprise and then it usually comes in a little bit less, but he mentioned the price of petroleum and they're talking about oil going up this year. So to, I'm just saying, if, if we're hoping that the number comes in less than what we're projecting, that may not turn out to be the case this year.
I, I get it, you know? I don't disagree with you. I, I can only say that I have the pleasure of reading a daily newsletter every morning on the world money markets and, you know, I, I realize their game. Something's always going up, something's always going down, and they talk about that, but not, nobody says, that means this is what happened. They just say, this went up and that went down. So, so we, you know, even, either way, we're just playing with, with, with the very large number. So if we say somewhere in the 2.1 or 2.2 range, I, I think we, we just start selecting those that, that need it worst and, and put the rest in, on the list for next year and the next, next least worst.
Well, I think the only thing that everyone's 100% agreeable is that Hartford needs to be.
Yeah.
And that, under, under that same thought, like, I'm fine, we could, we could have a ten-year plan as long as, you know, the front and Norman River are on the top of the first year of the plan. That's the way I'm at. Or some variation of that. I guess that's the easiest way to say it. Or it's fair.
If I could make a suggestion with counsel's consideration, since it seems that everybody at least likes the idea of having a three-year tenured plan.
Right.
Asking the engineer to set up maybe an option A, B, C of how mathematically or financially you get, and you follow that plan. And instead of debating individual roads, council would then have smaller choices to select from that might help narrow debate.
So, so I, I like that option. It would be kind of a, you'd have to do the math.
I agree with that. I mean, in terms of.
That's a point. Do, do we have to decide tonight? Or would, would we, would we be putting us, putting ourselves back in the, in the, in the bucket with the fall? You know, because this always takes forever. You know, I know we wanted to be very aggressive, and I appreciate you doing that. But if we made the decision at the next work session, would that make it too late? Or do we need to really give you some direction tonight?
First and second reading, you're talking about February, is that this year?
January 23rd, you decide and then introduce on Feb, on February 6th, and then in public hearing, March 6th?
You could actually do it, you probably have room to do it on this fourth, uh, fourth Tuesday in February. If, you know, if you don't have a problem with doing it at a regular.
I mean, at the two meets right now, I mean, that's something we'll just have to resort.
Right.
If that, if our company makes a decision.
So how long does it take you to do the specs, once we say, go?
Uh, it's more fun to survey. And we always say like two months.
So that's March and April. May the bids go out?
Yeah. And that's when we did last year.
About 60 days.
So.
Bids, bids is like fast tracked, about a month. It's a month to, to bid and then award, and then a month to have like your contract execution, reconstruction.
So you're always, it starts July, August, something like that.
No, it's within that year.
So, so let, let me expand on Brian's point so that we don't, we don't beat this further to that. So I like that, let's do it mathematically, but I like better because you have, you have eyes on all of these and a professional opinion on all of these, to put, to put those that make sense from, from an execution standpoint and from a need standpoint together and tie in the money standpoint. So you're going to be juggling your, your index cards, old school, to say, look, this is really bad, but it would make more sense to do this, this can last one more year, this can't last one more year. It's hard for, you know, we're, we're making these decisions based on, on what we think might be the case, and you're hopefully making these decisions, you know, in somewhat of the vacuum from a strictly engineering, financial perspective. Does that make sense, Jim? Uh huh. Not looking for you to make the decision on these. I think our biggest decision is the money. And, and then, you know, we're all going to fight for the roads that we think need it.
We're just doing more.
We're just doing more. Jeez.
Well.
It's the way you spend money at home. Yeah, we're just doing more. Financing, yes. Yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying, but there's like, you know, and it goes just back to, you know, what Dan just said, is that, you know, these numbers might, petroleum skyrockets again, and these numbers might not even be close in two years or three years.
I get it, but.
Not to mention that there's really, you know, who knows who's, like, it might be a great plant that I have it, it doesn't mean that, you know, two or three years from now there's going to be people here that say, yeah, that was a great plant, we're going to go.
Yeah. So I get that. But if we said, all right, let's do 2.1 million and, and throw caution to the wind, and then we just want to do a road program for two years, and four roads blow up in the next two years and have to be paved, then we'd spend 2.9 million or 3 million. I just, I think, I like the staging though.
If we were going to play, this is my whole, if we're going to pay, if, if like we were going to do $200,000 worth of roads versus 2.3 million, it'd be different.
Right.
We're already, you know, I think everybody and Jeff's reported, the consensus, you know, the idea is million of capital improvement, it's not all roads, but the fault of it is, you know, the largest percent, 80%, you know, I mean, we have lease cars and some other things like that, but we've already.
Jerry doesn't want anything else.
Well, I don't know what else he could order, that's the truth.
He'll come up with ideas.
But yeah, yeah, sure. But, you know, and, but, you know, so to say, hey, we're going to do this road program as a combined and just not have a scheduled road program next year is not really that crazy an idea. You know, if something happens between, you know, the next four months and there has to be a road that's an emergency, it's going to be emergency anyway.
Right.
You know? And it's a great, right about the same amount of money, and there's probably just enough savings with, you know, the potentials of petroleum to say, hey, that's 15% more than what we're going to spend over the years anyway. It's probably worth doing it now while we have it under control.
I don't know whether I'm, I'm comfortable betting on the future of petroleum prices, because who knows?
Well, there, there is a bottom. I mean, zero is the bottom, but it's pretty close. You know, so it's really one direction.
What's oil going for now?
Well, I don't know where it's going. I've just seen the pump has jumped.
6140 again. I mean, the barrel.
And they're talking about, they're talking about maybe 290 by the end of the year. What that means with the barrel, I don't know.
I don't know. So, so I.
There's just a big, well, we have time.
So I think maybe, maybe a compromise here, something, right, somebody write this down, send it to Washington. Maybe we look at a million dollars for this year and a million or, you know, if we can get all them in, some of them as deletion items, we get all them in, then we're halfway there. Then this three-year plan became a two, two-year plan.
Let me ask a question. What, what is the total for Hartford, you know, after the brand? Lydall, Lichtentholz, Norman?
He really wants Norman.
Well, I was, I was trying to make, I was kind of. Just made that clear. I, I get it.
I thought, I thought it was for.
Hey, waited a long time. I don't imagine to get into the.
River and, and maybe to try to work that section in front of the plant as the utility issue, so we can take the pressure off. Which is the worst section of the road. And, you know, maybe the county does, maybe they don't. Maybe the bike path in front of it's going to be a bunch of strikes. You know, we don't really know.
If you did Intidum, Diane, Patricia, and Winmore, that's about like 600.
Well, without those.
Yeah, I know, it, it, so that's kind of like one group I was thinking of. And then another group would be Lydall, Lichtentholz, Hartford, and Front. That's about like 750, 850.
But what if we did Norman instead of Front? And the reason I say that.
About a million. I just did that math on my calculator. It's a little less than 950.
Norman, Lydall, Lichtentholz, Hartford, that was all? That's 950.
Yeah, that's about 950.
Wait, you said Hartford, Norman, Lydall, Lichtentholz. And what else?
I think that was that close.
Norman, Hartford, Lydall, Lichtentholz, Normans. So, is that what, what?
You're right, go ahead.
Well, let's, let's do this. Because the two weeks, the two weeks are not going to, they're not going to screw us up. We're not going to say, oh geez, it's November, we can't get this done. Which is what we've, you know, what we, I love the fact that we're in a spot where we're actually going to pave the 2018 road program in 2018. So, you know, as long as that happens, and it sounds like the two weeks isn't going to make a difference, why don't you reclump, recluster these in, in a, in a million?
Million?
Million-ish? You know, if it's a million one, and then we'll have some, see how this, how this works? I feel like I'm poking.
I was going to say, my wife at the.
Yeah, right. Yeah, Connie, we're really, really.
With engineering.
She doesn't watch this. I hope not.
Total call.
God, no.
Total call's with engineering.
With engineering, yeah. And, and, and that way we have, we have a chunk. You know, I don't, I, you know, Hartford's got to be in there.
Yeah, Hartford's got to be. But I, you know, it's, and I think that, like, this was my thought for us, Lydall with both, but always a little fine. It's still, it's low traffic, but it's been a little less. And Norman, there's just too much on that street. There's too much commercial, there's the utility, there's the county park, there's, that's a high-volume street, you know, it's, and I think at some point you got to consider that, you know, that, and actually all the front, which is equally volume because of a Simon and Schuster, the part from Main to Leon, I don't know if it's, you know, as important as the part from Main to Third, or Main to Brown.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just to play devil's advocate, I think if we don't do Lichtentholz and those, there'll always be something that's traveled more than that. I mean, if it's.
Right, and street. Right. It's kind of like, what was the one by Ellen?
Rowland?
Rowland.
Rowland.
Rowland, surprisingly, is very busy.
Rowland, Rowland, too. Rowland all across the course.
Right. Well, what I'm saying was that was, that road was, felt like it was down to dirt. I mean, it was, it was pretty bad. So, so let's do that. Let, let's do that. Let's use those as your, as your parameters. Come up with something creative. And try to stay in that one-ish with engineering, 1 million with engineering.
Yeah, 1.2.
Whatever. And, and give us a deletion item that we can take off. And, and we go from there.
It can't be Hartford.
Yeah, it just can't be Hartford. Hartford, we have to do.
Jim, you said that the road program we're in now, that we may come in under what we budgeted. Do you have any idea? Or do you, do you have an idea when you'll know that? Does it fall into the parameters we're dealing with right now, or will it be after that?
Well, it'd be, well, I don't know, Jeff, a lot of that answer has to come from Jeff, but I know, are, we plan to close out our contract with them beginning of February at the end of this month. And the projected final payment's going to be about 100,000 less than where our award was.
And the awards.
But that's not what you budgeted, that you budgeted more. But I don't know, there's other things that go into that budget than just the road program.
Right. So, so, you know, I, I think that, I think that that works, that we do that, and I know that, you know, we, we, we always kind of play it that way so that we're not caught short.
Right, yes.
And, you know, let's see, I come up with those answers for us, and then the next meeting will, will, will have it in advance, we'll be able to look at it, and then we can talk about it and say, let's move forward with this, and we be prepared to, to move forward and move fast like you did last year. Does that make sense, everybody? Anybody have?
I got it.
So we look at that, and then, and then if that goes well, then the next year we'll finish it. You know, as things are going, the way, the way we keep raising this up, it's at 1.1, another 1.1, we're at 2.2, we're done. We're done. All right, excellent. Now that we have one item off the agenda, Paul and Mac, it's going to be, where's Patty with the, with the Dana? She'd be cutting by now, I'm just saying.
I already thought of that. Number two.
Number two. Our judge is retiring. Joe Difanics, he's been here a long time and, and done a great job. What do we do now, Jeff?
The mayor will make a claim in case of consent of counsel, so he'll be submitting a name to you at some point.
Okay. Is that the way it works?
Yes.
Okay. And there you have it. That makes it, that was easy enough. Anybody have any questions? Good. Girls and Voice Day that are coming up, let me preface this by saying that I attended Voice Day, and it was a great experience, and I still remember it as if it were not as many years ago as it was. Kind of a lot of years ago. Jeff, this is a relatively light number, and we've done this every year that I've been in the past.
Yes.
Anybody have any objections to supporting?
No. The numbers are still the same, right?
Yes. We don't have the Voice Day request, but I'm asking for approval for that same time as usually comes in the next week or so. That Girl State was 230, so it'll be about the same, 230, it'll be about the same thing.
Okay, the CDPG engineering authorization. Let me get to that. Jeff, fill for you while I'm looking.
This is CDBJ authorization to do the road, Pheasant Road, 12,500 dollars. And what you would need to do is to, is approve Revolution 2018 to authorize the engineer to move forward on that.
Motion approved. Do we have that motion in the packet?
There's a motion in your packet. 2018-22.
Two thousand eighteen dash twenty-two.
Eighteen dash twenty-two. Jamie?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mr. Porx?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Cottrell?
Aye.
Thanks, we'll get that done right away.
Okay. Request for refund of payment, prepayment of two thousand eighteen taxes, block one sixty-eight, block eleven. Thank you, Congress.
As everybody probably knows, there was a big rush to prepay taxes as a result of the changes in the federal tax law. And we anticipated that this would happen, and it has. We had one taxpayer pay an amount and has requested a refund. Therefore, the information to Brian for him to take a look at. And Brian, if you want to comment?
Sure, I took a look into this today. So, specifically, what the IRS guidance is, is that any prepayment that is made in two thousand seventeen on an assessment that came in two thousand and eighteen may be eligible to maintain that two thousand and seventeen deduction. The particular individual, I think, might not understand that the assessment occurred as of October one. So, in New Jersey, all assessments have to be October one. So, it would seem, without knowing the specifics, that they would technically be eligible. That also comes with the caveat that this is just informal guidance. This isn't an actual rule from the IRS. So, as far as what the township should do, obviously, the township can't give legal advice, including tax advice, to any of its residents. Would not be amiss for council anytime you feel questions about this. Or Jeff, to explain that, yes, all assessments by law have to occur on October one. So, that part is satisfied. So, what, so then that would put the person in a position that should be able to figure out whether or not they met the guidance themselves. Any other questions really should go to a tax professional. And if they still insist on having a refund, I would recommend against that, given that it would set a bad precedent for that refunds of prepayments and someone making a decision and just trying to retract it based on new information thereafter. Just sets a bad precedent for the township that if in the future, you wouldn't want to have that precedent there and potentially be forced to do the same again in a future situation.
I have a question.
There's a shock. I mean, Mike, you on the floor?
Sorry, Brad. The, in any other situation where someone made an overpayment, and there was no technical, there wasn't technical due, we would refund it? Is it, I mean, I see this is different, but.
That's different in the sense that that is an overpayment, and this is a prepayment. So, as with the prepayment, they're finished. They've just paid their two thousand eighteen full property tax bill in two thousand and seventeen.
It was explicit to do that. Right, and you're like, they paid this because that's what they wanted to do.
Exactly. They made, they made their own financial decision on, based on the amount of knowledge, information that they had at the time. And, you know, for any individual doing that, you're taking a bet on what the IRS is actually gonna do. It's not really, it's not the township's job to back up their financial decisions.
No, and I understand that. But the first quarters do, February first, right?
February one, yes.
For this year. I mean, would it be like really crazy to say, well, you know, February one to refund it in January? It's kind of silly, but, I mean, you know, there's no overpayment for that tax payment, or refund the amount? I know, and, and yeah, this could be a precedent, and I understand that, I don't, it's unfortunate that you got that advice. It's unfortunate you have to do that.
I don't even think they got that advice.
They might not.
Based on everything I've read.
Newspapers.
I mean, based on everything I've read, it, it looks like since you have a tax bill for the first two quarters of next year, that, that that's deducted. I mean, again, I'm not giving tax advice, but based on everything I've read, that appears to be the case. Some people did come in and pay the entire year, taking a shot. I mean, some people do that anyway, quite frankly, but the part I don't understand with this one is why they're asking for a full refund.
Well, that's kind of what I'm saying, is like, the first quarter is silly. And maybe the first two quarters could be silly because you're technically due.
Reading the letter, my understanding was this individual isn't aware when the assessments actually occur, so therefore thinks that they don't meet the guidance. But.
Yeah, we can't really do that without giving them tax advice.
Correct.
So, so let me just, because you, I wasn't clear on what year you said. So, it can only be, it can only count, prepayments can only count if the assessment is done in seventeen or in eighteen?
In seventeen, so it's, the assessment and the payment have to come in two thousand and seventeen.
And it's, they could, because, you know, there's been a million rumors going around. My accountant won't be returning my call anymore, so I don't know. So, could they, if they prepaid and it was assessed appropriately, would the full year's taxes be count for last year? No, is the half year?
Well, it depends on.
Tax advice.
I'm just, I can tell you this, first of all, I can tell you right now is, they can't know what the next two quarters, the last two quarters really are gonna be.
They, they guesstimated. There's no bill, we don't know where they're at, we don't, nobody has a budget.
Not, that's a question is that, you know, they've been billed through the second quarter of two thousand and eighteen.
And that, I read it, you know, that.
There isn't even a bill for.
You don't have a bill, you're paying for something.
Yeah, there isn't a bill for the second two quarters. And if that was his request to refund taxes that he paid that haven't been billed, that's no overpayment, that's pretty simple. You know, on that basis.
I'd say it's, one of the towns is honoring the request that way. Is that if somebody paid the whole year requesting to be paid back, they're not paying back the first two quarters.
Just paying back the, what was, what was not billed?
It's just, it's just one town.
Another aspect, sorry. Another aspect would be, you know, for top, what would be the individual tax implications for any given taxpayer of refunding only half a year? Does that, would the IRS then saying, you don't get a deduction at all? I mean, that's something to consider as well, because this is not.
I think that should be presented that, you know, if the council's inclined, that, you know, we would refund the unbilled tax payments for the third or fourth quarter. But, you know, that's his decision if that's acceptable. I mean, with no, no suggestion that, you know, nobody knows how it's gonna really be implemented. You know, that's kind of what I'm thinking. I mean, that's what I was thinking we should do. We haven't even billed four. We don't know what's going to happen, isn't overpaying, refund that part.
We were really hoping that the New Jersey, the local government services would come out with guidelines for this. They, they have not yet.
They do.
My guess is.
So, is this something that, that, you know, should we wait for them to come out with something? Or is that, that could be now, or it could be next December?
Honestly, they probably can't come in with anything definitive until the IRS comes out with a definitive rule. And I do not know when that will be.
So, wouldn't that have to be before people start filing their taxes?
Not necessarily.
No, well, should it make sense?
Yeah.
That's what happens when you rush legislation, don't you think?
Yeah. So, you know, I, you know.
I just think that if it's acceptable, that's their real option. Because like, I'm listening to Mr. Schott saying, you can't, like, you can't have somebody who paid their taxes for February, come back, come in and say, oh, I forgot to pay my car payment, I have to refund. This is not due.
Right, right.
Like, that is not really the case for the first, first two quarters we billed for, we paid it. If he overpaid those first two quarters where he's been billed and he wants a refund, that would be, you know, just given the option, that's one thing.
Just because it's that kind of a night? So, what if we didn't do that? And then it turns out that they could have taken that? That doesn't open us up to any liability, does it?
No, we're honoring it.
No, I don't think it, I don't think it opens you up to any liability, but it could open you up to at least the hassle of them coming back and blaming, you know, you that they didn't get the deduction, if not possibly litigation. I don't think you ultimately sound liable, but I, I guess that is my caution is, by the town, any individual's made a personal financial decision to make the full year payment. They didn't have complete information. Now that they have, now that they may or may not have better information, it's really not the township's position to allow them a redo. And by, if you were to do so, it really just pulls you into the whole situation for longer. Because we don't know what the, we just don't know how it's gonna work out. So, if it works out against, if it does work out against the individual taxpayer, who's to say that they won't come back to the township with a new request?
Right. And.
That sort of work. I agree with the, you know, perm on that, because now, you know, with the doctor, something changes now. You know, they explicitly went forward and gave us that money, knowing it was a prepayment, you know? And then you can come back and ask for that back. You know, it's different if it's overbilled, or you accidentally paid more. But, I mean, they explicitly did this to get a deduction. Now that we've come back and say, oh, I messed up, you know? I just think it sets precedent that now we're getting in a, in a tank of all these people.
I mean, other, but other people paid in advance?
Yes.
A lot of people?
There was a steady flow of traffic that came in.
So.
I can't say whether they all made, a lot more people paid two quarters.
Right.
Well, the real answer, I guess, is the, kind of, maybe if he, his request is for refunding or overpaying the taxes, you know, it could be considered.
He's asking for a complete refund.
That's correct.
He's asking for, he's asking for the whole seventy-five hundred.
That's right.
That's my opinion. He explicitly gave all the money. I mean, I understand the bad advice, I feel bad, but, I mean, the precedent, what's that set? The IRS tomorrow says, we're not taking any deductions for two thousand and seventeen, you're gonna have to line out the door. Everybody lining up to get everything. Yeah. Well, that's good. Yeah, the first two quarters, yeah.
Well, I think the best is the response that we don't give tax advice. Or something that, maybe it's saying nice words.
So, we could never refund the first quarter. So, we could never, if, if this seventy-five hundred dollars went, if a portion of this seventy-five hundred dollars went to the first quarter, then we couldn't refund that anyway.
Correct. Now, what the guidance from the IRS specifically said, it wasn't that any of the bills were issued in two thousand and seventeen. It was that the tax assessment occurred and was given in two thousand and seventeen. So, they should have, they have the tax assessment in for the whole year. Technically, if, under the way the guidance is written, they should, anyone who's paid in two thousand and seventeen has the full assessment in two thousand and seventeen. They'd be able to dump the entire, that entire year payment without factoring in the ten thousand dollar cap that's now in place. So, that, I think that makes it complicated discussing it. But we've only.
Legal is saying that there are no measures just not to honor this request.
Yes.
And that's what I think we should do.
Yeah, that's.
I, you know, I, I, I don't disagree. I, I think this is, this is treacherous water.
Wow, it's great.
It's complicated and it's moving. We don't, it's not, none of this is a decided issue.
And you haven't given any input. You're scratching your head like Meg.
No, I, I. No, I just think that we're in a bit of a catch-22. People did something based on what they knew, and then after they did it, it got, and the change was in the paper, I think. I don't even think it's, it's the IRS. The IRS hasn't really told us anything yet.
Well, you know, I, on this one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Mike. Legal counsel, our legal counsel says the appropriate decision is to not refund the money. You know, it's not like, it's not like it's not going to apply to their eventual two thousand and eighteen assessed taxes. This is all about playing, playing, you know, trying to play the rules with the IRS. I'm not saying that in a bad way. I'm just saying that it's been there, it's gonna be applied to a future assessment. But the first, so, now, we can't, I'll call my accountant, see if I can get an answer to that. Maybe if I call him after the meeting, answer the phone. I, I don't disagree. I think we have to do what we have to do. Do we have to make a ruling on this, or just?
This is a policy question within the council's discussion. So, I think a direction to township administrator for discussion.
So, I believe that council has decided that the direction is, sorry that we can't refund this, but we can't. Okay. That was fun.
Our tax, right?
This is the, okay. So, this is, this is a follow-up on the request for the, the interest that was, if you recall, this was someone that went to their credit union, ordered electronic payment. That was, according to the credit union records, deducted and sent out. I'm assuming via mail, US mail is the way, it didn't hit, didn't get to us, it was never recorded. They were charged interest, and they want us to waive the interest. So, before we even start talking about this situation, let me just, let me just ask our attorney, I don't know if it's our attorney or if it's our policy or what it is. If this was, I gave the envelope to my wife, she mailed it, it never got here. Wait, Jeff, what, what are we doing? This is, I entrusted somebody to mail this check. They say they did, but it didn't get here. So, if I gave the check to my wife and she said, I put it in the mail, but it didn't get there, what happens? What do we do? And I said, hey, I mailed it, you just didn't get it.
The money's still owed, it was never received.
The money's still owed. And, and we therefore would not refund the interest?
Correct.
We would not?
Correct.
I think this is that.
Yeah.
One thing, though.
Oh, man. Michael, if you wanna, if you wanna argue the opposite point and then agree with my point, I'm asking you not to do that.
No, I'm not, I'm just gonna be. In the past, when there have been bank errors, we have refunded interest from them. Now, does this, I, I saw a printout, but I didn't see a lot of the banks saying that they made an error. The bank says we made an error. A little different than.
I think the bank is saying, no, we mailed.
Yeah, the printout is showing.
That it was deducted.
Payment was deducted. And is that the right timeframe, Jeff, eight twenty-four?
Yes, it is the correct timeframe.
Then how the hell could they take the money out of there and then not give it to us?
Yeah, someone, they do, they set it, so.
Yeah.
When you send the check, it comes out.
Yeah.
You know?
But this is not, this is different from a transfer. This is a, they cut a check, I see that check, and they send it out.
And the bank's not saying that they made an error?
No.
It never got there.
Then I agree with you.
Touche, buddy.
Okay. Next is, this, this is so stinking convoluted. We can talk about this, Jeff or Jim?
I think I'm gonna let Jim do it.
I'll try to keep, you guys had a chance to review my email. My email was a little long-winded, you know, I apologize for that. Just to try to summarize it, you have existing storm sewer pipe that is on a property that's two oh two Patricia. The residents complained to the town, you guys, that the pipe, the storm sewer, showing some, some concerns with sinkholes. And he's saying that you need to repair it, because he thinks it's a public infrastructure problem. The pipe goes from an inlet that's in Patricia Avenue into a neighbor's property, it turns and goes and meets up with an inlet in the backyard of two oh two. The inlet, that drainage segment or drainage pipe, you know, picks up runoff from the surrounding area. There's other pipes connected to it, and there is a sinkhole in the front yard. So, the question comes down to, the tax map doesn't show any sort of easement. I've asked the property owner, and Jerry has property owner, if his, he hasn't produced a property survey yet, but he said, but, you know, his property survey doesn't show any sort of easement. So, without any easement, there's really no ability for the township to access it. You know, usually, you use the fact whether or not there's an easement on it to determine who owns it. You know, the easement's usually put in place for pipe or any infrastructure that's on private property. To give you the ability to access it and, you know, make repairs as needed.
Is there any question that, you know, it wasn't done as part of the project?
It's hard, my observations are all speculation on what happened. Because, you know, what the things I see is that the inlet that's in the backyard, you know, the drainage structure, it doesn't look like it would be your standard prefabricated type of inlet that's built with an overall subdivision project. It doesn't, it's the way the block was built, the size, the grade on top. To me, it looks like it was something that was put in after the fact. When they probably built out this home, you know, and they realized there was a low point in the backyard, and they had to address it somehow, and they put in this drainage problem. It's a little alarming that it runs, it looks like it runs into the backyard of that corner lot at Suezón and Patricia. And that homeowner, whoever lived there, any property owner that lives there, must have known about it. You can't see it from the surface, so it's gotta be buried or covered, so I don't.
So, you're saying that it was done by the original builder?
It could have been, it was probably, I, I hate to speculate. I mean, it looks, I also can say it's done, it looks like it was done after the fact, like, it wasn't part of any original subdivision project. Now, that's, and the only thing, the storm sewer that's in Patricia does discharge between the two homes. Then it goes out to the creek, to the two homes on opposite side of two oh two. Only thing is, the tax map doesn't show an easement on their property either, so. I, I don't, you know, I don't know how this pipe was put, but, you know, when.
That's great. These are not the original owners?
No. And he purchased the property, not even that long ago, it was.
Maybe nine.
He had, yeah.
Was that it?
But I asked about it, and he was like, that person who he bought it from just said it was a township storm sewer. Without doing any sort of, you know, he got, I asked him, he got a title report, you know, anything that showed any sort of easement or anything like that. He said, he said he was gonna go back and look through his deed, because his deed did reference a couple of easements, but nothing that would, any easement like this should have shown up on the survey, you know, that it was there. should have shown up on the survey, you know, that it was there. A lot of times there's blank easements for PVC and G or other utilities along the front edge, but, you know, I, if, if he got a property survey and title board, it would have shown a drainage easement that was dedicated to the township on the property.
It's just something that's normally dedicated to the township?
Yes.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't?
I would think, there's something of, I mean, that's, it is a twenty-four inch corrugated metal pipe that goes all the way to the back, that's like an infrastructure-type pipe.
It's not just...
It's not, it's a small pipe, and that's consistent with the pipe that's in the street. So there's, there's things that kind of point to both, that it's inconclusive, you know, it could be, it could have been an infrastructure improvement that was put in with the road, but mostly it was done after the fact, the builder was still around, so he just used the same materials. You know, like, it's, it's hard to tell. The bottom line is, there's a big, there's this big sinkhole in the front, it's all corrugated metal pipe, it's probably deteriorating, you can try to fix the front of it, or somebody could try to fix the front of it, the whole pipe's probably going to get replaced. And, you know, and that's another thing, he says, he goes, he tells, he asks, well, if I own it, can I just fill it in?
Well, that was going to be Mike.
Yeah. So the, the thing is, it's kind of like, what we, the policy of me kind of using your orders is, is to tell everybody, like, you got to maintain drainage patterns. Just like if you have your neighbor's properties, overland runoff flows onto your property and through across your property, you can't go and put a wall up to keep that water off your property, you have to maintain drainage patterns that were established. I would say that, you know, if he has a storm sewer, and I would have to get legal advice on this too, but if he has a storm sewer on his property, whether or not it's public or private, it's serving a public benefit, that's serving the surrounding area, if he just fills it in, you know, and he's causing a negative impact on his properties, he might be responsible for that.
Is that something we should handle?
Well, you know, that's, that's a decision that the governor is going to make as far as what becomes something that's a public benefit that you need to address. Like, similar situation is like, you know, where streams go through people's backyards on Stonyam, you know, you have erosion, you know, at what point is it a private improvement? What time, what time, what time does the public need to step in? How many people does it take to be impacted to?
So, does, according to your picture there, it looks like this impacts three or four homes? The sinkhole's only on, on the one home?
The sinkhole is only on the one home.
And that inlet by that, I guess that was a pool?
Yeah, that's cannot be, it's dashed line there, because we don't know what's going on there, we can't see anything, that's an assumed location of some sort of structure.
How do we find that out?
The only way, the only thing you're going to be able to do is dig, you have to dig up.
But that won't tell us who put it in?
Oh, no.
Or who owns it? We have no easements on this? There's nothing on the tax map?
We have nothing to believe that we have an easement, at this point.
Is that something you can get an easement for? I mean, we could do that, right?
If we needed to acquire an easement?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I would imagine that if you wanted to take up this project, the first thing you would have to do is bring both those property owners in and have a sign over easements to it.
We would, because you have to speculate again to repair that, say we did, take it on what's it costed?
I had somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand, with all engineering.
What, so which, the water, you know, as, as we're looking...
The water enters the inlet in the backyard.
By the, by the existing pool or by the pool that's not there anymore? There's, there's two inlets.
Where they're south.
On the bottom of the page.
So the south inlet?
The water enters this one, and the water, and the pipe, everything flows towards Patricia, towards the top of the sheet.
Okay.
So everything flows in the back one, and then, the pipe, the pipe goes towards the corner lot, then turns and goes back towards Patricia. So at some point, the pipe turns, you can't just turn a pipe underground, you need some sort of structure to turn it. So there's some sort of structure in the corner lot that we're assuming, and that's just an approximate location, you know, it could be anywhere in there.
And that's from the inlet to the storm sewer, or it runs under several properties?
It looks like there's just two properties.
Two properties. Does it serve the public interest for drainage?
The storm sewer and inlet in their yard appears to provide, you know, drainage for the surrounding block of homes.
But do all the block homes drain into that drain?
Yeah, basically, most houses, and whether, you know, they're graded, you know, the front of the property grades towards, the, front of the property grades, the front of the back of the property grades towards the back. That's what it looks like. It looks like, it looks like a hole, you know, everything's draining towards the back.
I think from Mike's point, that is essential for drainage for that neighborhood.
I think so.
Not just for the public?
Yeah, and keep in mind too, there's a pipe that goes into it itself, there's like a six-inch PVC pipe that comes into it that heads back up into the middle, further into the middle of blocks, and there's water seeping through that. So that, that might be another yard drain that's something going in or something.
Further south?
Yes.
But that, and that's not...
Thank you. I have a hard time just telling this guy that it's his problem if it serves a public interest that much.
It serves a public as, and it serves more than one property, it appears to.
Well, is there a way to find out?
Because is it his neighbor just serving, or is it...
Yeah.
Well, everybody's backyard, all the rain that flows on these group of homes that surround this inlet, all their backyards are draining towards this inlet.
Those five, if that wasn't there...
They, they, you, you'd start, you could potentially get a buildup of water in that backyard.
In that one backyard?
Yeah, and depending how much rain falls, whether it infiltrates, you know, it could have, you just...
The whole point is, if you, you as the engineer says this serves a public interest, I think we're kind of thinking the same thing. Yeah, would that be easements and we own it? If it doesn't, I mean, it looks like it was something that somebody had put in for their personal property, that's their problem. Unfortunately, even if it's the new, new owner of that property, they acquired it.
So, I don't know if this is going to be similar, but we've seen a number of drainage lines in Sweets Run without easements. I don't know if the developers put them in at the end, but I know we've run into them before where people have asked us, see how the one that's popped up.
Janeway, one of them in Janeway?
I'm, I'm talking about in Sweets Run now. There was one in Sweets Run where they drained to the backyard, and I think it was Jacqueline.
Yeah, that's right there.
There's a couple of them that, that have popped up that, that do not have easements, don't show up on any maps, and then you get a call with the same one?
Janeway was one, Janeway has a sinkhole, there's no easement. I mean, he asked the person, the guy wouldn't give us any easement, so we refused the thing. But we ended up, we're just fixing the hole.
Easy, yeah.
We ended up fixing, just fixing the hole, but...
This guy wouldn't give us an easement.
Well, he's going to give you an easement, but it's probably, a lot of times they'll ask you for money, because they're, say the value of their property's going to be reduced for sale if they give you an easement, even if it's resulting in a problem.
That's what happened on Janeway, we agreed to give him some landscape, because we had to fix out some of the shrubs, but he said no, he wanted more.
What can we make of this, say we went that route, and he says, no, you need to pay me X amount of dollars, can we say, well, the deal's off at that point?
You've got a limited property, right?
We'd have to go, we had to bring the person in the corner, we had to notify him. So then they're, they're laying...
When you're referencing the corner, are you talking about Sweets Run?
This lot right here is where the one where the pool's going over there, that's the corner of Patricia and Sweets Run.
Oh, re, oh, that's right. That's a short block. The Patricia, it's a short block.
Yeah, this guy, this guy, this house, two oh two is the only house that fronts up between Jacqueline and Sweets Run on that side of the road.
Jeff, are you saying that this will probably come up in the future again?
I, I just, I know we've seen some drainage issues, but most of them are along the backs of properties. I mean, Sweets Run. And there was one, and I can't remember where the address was, but there was one where the guy has a drain in the middle of his backyard that came to the front. Jacqueline, yeah. I mean, to me, it only, I think it only really addressed his property, maybe the one right next to him. But again, it didn't look like anything, you know, you've been, I've been here for twenty-seven, you've been here for twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-three, and, you know, the towns didn't put, the town didn't put them in. At least that many years.
Do we have, well, is there like the original inspection reports? Where they, where these places were built?
The only thing that would help, not nearly inspection reports, it's if you have the old subdivision plan. Definitely have to file for them, if you have any. I don't even know. That, that's what would tell us. I mean, then from there, we can see if it was part of the original subdivision plan or not. I mean, all these house types are different too, so it's like all the houses would look like they were built not at the same time.
They are, that was put in development.
It's very odd to have a drainage improvement like that, like go around a house like that. It's like the house, that's what leads us to say, look, the house was probably put in, and they realized they have a low point in the backyard, and this way they put the pipe in to go around the house.
That house does look dramatically different from the others, although...
Well, it might have been an infill lot or something that was done after the fact, and this, like, was maybe like done, like, we have, we want to build a house here now, but we have this drainage problem in the back, but the fact that it goes through the corner lot is, is a little odd.
So are you asking Gary, like, is possible that was like a non-development home that was either there or built here?
You know, I'm just, I'm just...
No, what I'm saying there, Jamie can look for the permits, so that's something.
So, so I'm looking at...
Looks a lot bigger than the others around.
It's, we talked about that, and, and it does, it does look dramatically different the way that it's wedged in, like, so if you look at this, like, look at these houses that are surrounding it, I, I would be able to pull up a...
The lot was recreated with the, with the subdivision.
It was.
It was supposed to be a house.
Yeah, because it's lot number twenty-three, so it wasn't like a subdivision of, of the lot that was there, that's what would be like twenty-three oh one. And like, there's a couple other lots in the subdivision, actually, that have a similar shape, like Linda.
Something, I mean, does it make sense that Jamie look at that and then...
Yeah, I think it makes sense to find these construction plans that you have, and I think that will, that will provide a lot of insight as far as...
It was your problem, you had it.
Yes, yeah, I mean, I was going to reach, I, I can reach out to the homeowner again to see if he's had any luck, have put an notice on him to do some more technical research to see if there's an easement exist. The storm pipe that, that crosses the street, that does give two to...
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Yeah, you don't have a CCO process, right? Yeah.
No, but if they've ever applied for any permits or...
Pull the building permit.
Yeah, I'll pull any of the building permit files to see if we have any surveys in any of the files.
See if we get a yes or no from that.
Yeah.
I was asking your question before, as far as like public improvement, the drainage doesn't appear to drain public improvements as far as public interest, but it, it indirectly serves multiple properties. It was probably put in by one guy to stop a problem in his backyard that helps actually drain the water from the surrounding problems.
Yeah, well, the question I think I have is if it serves more than one person. More than one person in a public, in a public interest. And is his neighbor, I don't know, like, being if you're talking five, six, eight homes, if this guy decides to fill it somewhere, not create a farm.
It looks like one, two, three, four of the homes. Well, it's showing a plate from here.
Probably the way the water drains down and the natural things there.
But I think if he tries to fill it, he'll just have a big pool of water.
And so will the neighbors.
Depending on how much work was...
Okay, let's do that.
I know Gary was about to say, but can you find out more information?
I just agreed with Jeff. Jeff said, you want us to get more information? And I said, and you were, so there you go. All right, so we're going to get more information on that. Let's, let's go around the room and see what Jerry has to offer tonight.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Jamie?
Our next flood drive is February thirteenth, March twenty-sixth thirty.
It'll be our Valentine's Drive. Nice, nice. Jeff, you have anything for us?
Just one item is that the budget, as it has been for the last, I can't tell you how many years, five or 10 years, the division has sent out a new schedule which moves everything back approximately a month, so instead of having to budget mayor to council on January fifteenth, it's roughly February fifteenth, and everything moves back a month.
Okay. Jim, you have anything for us?
Yeah, I want to apologize, I didn't have the status report out by email last Friday, it was a little sidetracked with the weather and everything and other stuff, but I gave you a hand, a paper copy for everybody today, I will email that out again, and I'm most likely going to be back here in two weeks, so if there's anything that comes up, I'll be ready to answer it then. Real quick, the roof, I'm going to have plans and specs to Jeff next week for everybody to discuss on the twenty-third, with hopefully an authorization to advertise. Another thing authorized us for recently is the power conditioning project we're working on at RFP, we're going to have that to you next week for discussion on the twenty-third as well, with that authorization to advertise. Both those, we'd be hoping to have, if you have some, a good bidders come in, you know, for the March six, probably we need for a war, based on the calendar. Other than that, I don't think there's anything relatively new. The group, the sidewalk phase two, we're looking to apply to the DOT within the next couple of weeks, I'll have a check request for next, or less, if that makes it easier to work, or can we get it to go? I'll get that to you next week. Okay, that's all, if anybody has any questions?
Oh, I don't think so. Brian, you have anything for...
Nothing at the time.
No, okay. Dan, anything for us tonight?
I'd just like to thank the fire department for inviting us to the installation of their officers last night. And it was also very interesting to see the other towns that cooperate with, sent representatives from Delranco and Riverside.
I think Moorestown, or did Moorestown... It was, it was a, it was a nice small group, you know, it was nice to see they support, I don't know. Tyler, anything for us tonight?
No, thank you.
Mike, anything?
I think I've used my time.
I think you have. So whatever he's, he was eating before he got here, please don't feed it, and I frankly have the report. So...
I wish you all the best.
There you go.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or should Paris? We're just going to go around the room as we usually do. Tim, nothing tonight, thank you very much. Bob, anything for us?
Yeah, Bob Gilbert, seventy-five Stewart Avenue, Delran. Two real quick things, if anybody knows a vet, make sure they understand they get a three thousand dollar deduction this year from their state. I have forms, really, if anybody wants one, I can get you one. But it's three thousand dollars off your, off your state taxes, you know, it's an exemption because you're a veteran. Number two, with the water main breaks that we had recently on Chester, there was an incident where the water wasn't able to drain down because the storm grates were covered with snow. Is there any way that we can, I, I mean, we really had cold weather, I understand that, and that caused the water main breaks, but when, when there's plowing done, that the, when the snow starts to melt like it started today, there's no place for the water to go because those water grate, the drain grates are covered with snow, there's no place for work to go. It just lays in the road and then refreezes like a wilted night. That's it.
Jerry, you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, there, I, I can get them settled off, but it's all priority, I mean, I got to get all the sidewalks open for the schools and the bus stops all opened up, so, you know, I, I got twelve guys, I've getting all the trucks ready for the next snowstorm, tell me what you want me to do, if there was ever one you want me to do.
Well, I was just thinking, because, well, we had the water main breaks, and there was water laying on...
Yeah, I wasn't on, I was unaware of the water main break until I came back to work on Monday, and I went down there and sorted it, and that was, that was what I did, I had everybody else...
But right on the corner of, yeah...
What the hell's the name of that town?
Simon and Schuster. On the corner of Simon and Schuster, there's a grate there, and it's covered with snow. And then there's another one on, where was the other one that's on? On, on Chester Avenue itself?
On the other side of Chester Avenue, on the other side of the tracks?
On our side, yeah.
On your side of the track?
Yeah.
There's a cold, there's a...
There, there's a...
At Roland.
Huh?
At Roland.
At Roland.
At Frederick.
Huh?
At Frederick.
At Frederick.
Frederick and Roland. There's a drain, and it's covered, and then, and the one at the corner of, right where the corner is, where...
I'll send the guy on cleaning. I mean, if you, if you would have called me that day and said, "Yo, I got, it's clogged, can you send somebody to clean it?" I'd send somebody to clean it. I mean, I can't go around and clean them all, but I can do something like that, or send somebody over the back, I'll get it cleaned off. Do me a yawn, let me know, you know...
Well, the one in Roland's still blocked.
Okay, I'll get it cleaned up for him.
I think that brings up a good point before we go on. I see it all the time, people report a situation on Facebook, and just, you know, everybody at every opportunity can just remind them that, that's not where you report stuff. You know, somebody said something, "Oh, there's a this and that," and, and I didn't see it till the next day, and I'm sure it was over by then, but that, we don't have, look, this is it. This is it. We don't have a staff that monitors Facebook, you know, every Delran resident of any variation Facebook page, so please, if there's, if you're out there on Facebook, please, call the township, call 911 if it's an emergency. Is, what's the other number that they should call if they're...
7737.
4617737, and say, you know, there's a, there's a water main break, or there's flooding, or there's stormwater dropped, you know, don't take a picture, post it to Facebook. You might as well just not do anything. Sorry about that, just a pet peeve. Anything, Linda?
Linda Gilbert, 75 Stewart, Gary, you're gonna pay us out, but I agree with you, and I keep...
Oh, my God.